We'd like to call to order the meeting for Monday, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. To the clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Hope?
Yep.
Mayor Millicent Walters?
Can we all stand with the blood? The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you can tell, I'm not Nicole Millicent Walters. I'm Dale Reed, sitting in the firm of absence, Mayor Porten. First off, we have the approval of the minutes as we have in front of you. You take the agenda right then, that doesn't change the suggestions, modifications. I seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second with the clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yep.
Mayor Porten?
Yes.
Motion's passed, minutes are approved. Next up on the agenda, we have recognition proclamation and a wantonness to approve the appointment of Carrie Nikarada to the newcomers welcoming ad hoc committee. And you have in your pack background history, Ms. Nikarada submitted an airline committee application, an online committee application for November January. Ms. Nikarada has lived in the village for seven years and expressed her willingness to assist in showing new fellows part of this, how wonderful it is to live in the village and fellow's park. The mayor has recommended that we approve the form of Carrie Nikarada to the newcomers welcoming ad committee, and I will seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, and the clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yep.
Mayor Porten?
Yes.
We have no hearings on the agenda, next thing up for this consent agenda, the next thing up is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are retained or have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero three titled, "An Ordinance Abating Taxes Levy the Village of Hills Park, Cook County, Illinois." The ordinance informs the Cook County Clerk's office to not levy property taxes for the tax number year twenty twenty three relating to the payment of principal and interest due on the general obligation refunded bond series twenty twenty one A and general obligation bond series twenty twenty two A collected in calendar year twenty twenty four. B, to approve payment invoices on the ordinance dated January twenty second, twenty twenty four in the amount of hundred seven thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents before seeking an invoice on something like a bank account regarding the ordinance abating taxes. The village is able to do that of the revenues we have received from other various sources who will not have a need to have those taxes rebated. I think that's a good thing for the village because it shows we're kind of keeping our financial basket in order. Does anyone else have any comments before I move this forward? Hearing them, because we would have to put them off the conservative agenda, we did. We had massive emotion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Well, second.
We have motion and a second, the clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yep.
Mayor Porten?
Yes.
We got some old business to attend to. Next up, board commission and committee recommendations. Commissioner Wade, if you'd like to comment?
Yeah, absolutely. This deals with ZBA case twenty twenty three dash oh two, an application has been filed requesting a variation from the requirements of section twelve sixty-eight spot oh two F side yards to permit the construction of an attached pool house along with swimming pool. In December twenty twenty three, the applicant provided a revised plan which requires a variance to reduce the corner side yard setback from fifty feet to thirty-seven point six seven feet. The original request was for twenty-six feet eleven inches corner side yard setback. The subject property is commonly known as Twenty Home Road. And because we do not have a full staff here tonight, and Nicole is not here, I would just move to continue. If you don't have any questions, sir. That's all. Do you have any questions?
I'll second.
No, no, no. I move to continue ZBA twenty twenty three dash oh two regarding the variance for a thirty-seven point six seven corner side yard setback instead of the required fifty feet corner side yard setback as required by section twelve sixty-eight spot oh two F Hills Park Village Code to allow the construction of an addition to an existing family home to an existing family residence on the property commonly known as Twenty Home Road to the meeting on February twelfth, twenty twenty four.
So moved. I second it.
No, second, I'm sorry, second.
It's okay, just hope we're all here.
No.
We have a motion and a second, with the clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Mayor Porten?
Yes.
Next up, installation in that case, Public Works and Streets, your community's report, Madam Commissioner Patan.
Thank you, Mayor Porten. I have several things on our agenda today for Public Works and Streets. The first up is a contract that we have aimed with concentric integration for the maintenance of the super, the supa, the SACA, which is our data system for the water distribution system. The village has contracted with Concentric Integration, formerly Baxter and Woodman Control System since twenty sixteen for this maintenance, apart from twenty twenty three when the agreement was not brought to the council due to the timing of renewal. The last agreement approved in twenty twenty two was for eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. The proposed agreement for the maintenance for twenty twenty four is for nine thousand ninety-two dollars. With this agreement, we are changing the renewal date to January of each year. Public Works is seeking approval of this new agreement. I move to approve the twenty twenty four SCADA maintenance agreement with Concentric Integration in the amount of nine thousand and ninety-two dollars.
I'll second that.
Here your motion and a second, any more questions? Would the clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope? Mayor Porten?
Yes.
Continuing on, the second agenda has to do with an emergency repair of a chimney and flu at the Kepner Center due to flu gases entering the building. So this occurred on December twenty seventh of twenty twenty three. The flu gas escaping from the damaged exhaust system for the boilers into the working space of the Kepner Center. Comfort Zone Animal Canine came out to the village that day, discovered the problem, and completed the temporary repair. They were out two more times to replace the rusted pipe from the boilers in the basement to and through the road. The work was all custom sheet metal work to create the new venting. And the staff recommended approving this invoice from Comfort Zone. I move to approve the invoice from Comfort Zone in the amount of five thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars to complete this emergency repair of the exhaust system from the boilers in the Kepner Center.
Second.
Here your motion and a second, recognizing keeping our employees alive is a high priority. The clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Mayor Porten?
Yes.
Okay, we add to agenda number three. This is to approve an award of the bid for the McCarthy Road Transmission Main. A little background, background just recently, January tenth of twenty twenty four, bids were received at the Kepner Administrative Center for the extension of the village water system on McCarthy Road from just west of the intersection of Will Cook Road to west of the ComEd Right Way west of Bell Road. And we received a letter from Baxter Woodman, who is our engineering consulting firm on all the different bids that came in. And they summarized the bids and recommending the award of the bid to Steve Spees Construction of Frankfurt. Baxter Woodman, again, our consulting engineers, received all the bids and determined Spees with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder with its bid of one million eight hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. Seven bids were received, I'm sorry, seven bids were received ranging from a low bid all the way to three million two hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. So I move to approve recommendation from Baxter and Woodman and award the contract for the McCarthy Road Water Transmission Project to Steve Spees Construction in the amount of one million eight hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents contingent upon their completing all necessary paperwork and approval of the I E P A.
I'll second that.
Here your motion. Second. Oh, I got it. That's right. You know, we're spending a lot of money, got to put back on the ground. At some point, we gotta get the cost recovered. But we have to have the budget paid for itself. And so as we're spending these budgets with us, with kindness and that for fact, then, you know, we don't have a blank checkbook. There is a limit to what we dispense. And cost recovery is paramount. So we're getting the type of construction going out there to encourage some of the costs that we're laying down on front. Not that I'm giving the speech. If anyone else has anything to say now, we time to do it. The clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Mayor Porten?
Yes.
And finally, speaking of more money we need to spend, which is something that is needed, you know, we just don't have the staff in the building, as Mayor Porten was talking about. And Baxter Woodman, who will hear, we'll talk about again this evening, they consult and they help the village and the staff make these major decisions so that we can save money in the back end, save money for residents. So they've been around and they've been very useful, they've been very helpful to us. So the final agenda is to approve a proposal from, again, Baxter Woodman, they're our engineering consultants, to complete a utility rate study. So they're gonna perform a study for us. So Oak Lawn is nearing completion of the improvements to the southwest regional water system. The customer communities, which we are part of, that system will soon have to begin to pay for their part and our part's share of the construction costs. Public Works asked for proposal from Baxter Woodman to complete a detailed rate study to determine if the current rate structure must be changed to keep up with the new costs that would be added. And to determine what, if any modifications, need to be made. Baxter Woodman submitted a proposal with the cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. This is to complete a utility study, which will include both water and sewer funds of the village. Once done, the model will belong to the village, so if factors change, adjustments can be made in-house. The last time the detailed utility rate study was done was back in twenty oh seven. The cost at that time was thirty-four thousand, so a little less. It's, any questions? I move to approve the proposal from Baxter Woodman to complete utility water and sewer rate study for the amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
I just wasn't getting that from Congress. Trying to base rates on a fourteen-year-old rate study is just stupid. And we have to know what today's costs are when we compute today's rates. And the only way to do that is to have another great tape, speaking of detailed rate study done. So I think it's in the village's long-term best interest to make sure that this does happen, so we can have a clear idea of what costs we're in, first of all, expenses we take for the service. Does anyone else have any comments? That being the case, we have motion and a second, the clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Mayor Porten?
Yes.
That concludes my Public Works and Streets report. On to Recreation. Registration is now live for the Second Annual Peles Park Doggy Dash. The village of Hills Park's operation, Parks Department is thrilled to welcome back its two- and four-legged friends for a day full of fun. The race course highlights the unique features of the village with its rolling hills, mature trees, and quiet streets. After the race, the festivities ramp up on the village green for a post-race village. Dedicated to our pets, the post-race village will feature food, local pet inventors, a pup parade with prizes for best costume, cutest pup, and best personality, and much more. Our early bird pricing is available now through February twenty fifth, and sponsorship opportunities are available through Friday, February second. If you have any questions, email Stephen De Felco at D D Felco at HillsPark.org. And that concludes my report, Mayor Porten.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Mr. Commissioner Wade, if you have a question to see?
Yeah, I just, my report, residents, even though this kind of falls under Commissioner Hope as well, residents reminded to be aware of scam tactics. With spring approaching, residents are being advised to be on the lookout for scam artists posing as contractors. Some of the warning signs that you need to be aware of are people soliciting door-to-door, just know that professionals don't do that. Also, claim to be working in your neighborhood and notice that you need repairs. Offer a free inspection, which always turns up with a major repair. Tell you that you need to act right away, tell you that they have leftover materials from another job that you could use. They usually demand to be paid in cash, do not provide a detailed contract, or simply just ask for a large down payment. Make sure that anyone doing work for you is registered with the village and has pulled all necessary permits. The building department is here to help protect you from these unscrupulous individuals. Call us at seven oh eight six seven one thirty-seven thirty to verify if contractors registered with the village. Permits, the building department processed six permits from January second to January sixteenth, twenty twenty four resulting in thirty-one hundred dollars in permit fees. Right here, fiscal year to date to one hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and seven cents. Includes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Commissioner Dr. Dan Hope, if you have a question.
Thank you, Jurist Dr. Porten. I'll start with the Police Department Activity Report from January the eighth through the twenty-first of January, the year of Illinois twenty twenty four, twenty-one hundred thirty-two calls per service, seventeen additional citizen assists, ten occasion reports, thirteen accident reports, no arrests, neither adults nor juveniles, we didn't impound any home's vehicle, forty-five traffic stops, twenty-nine moving violations, an additional nine adjudication tickets, and eighteen speeding tickets. So that's what your Hills Park Police Department has been up to the last week. Just a quick comment on Commissioner Wade's issue about scams, it's also a tax season. So we see an increase in people clicking something in their Facebook page or getting a random email that purports to give you an updated report on all the newest changes in the tax law, and you end up giving them more information than you probably should. So again, if it doesn't look right, it doesn't, it probably isn't right. And you can also reach out to the Hills Park Police Department. We just helped a business in town work through what actually turned out to be a scam, and we were happy to do it. Took us about thirty-five minutes to figure out, and this was up to nowhere. So with somebody who was interested in hosting a private event, a business in the market. Again, we're here to serve, and includes businesses as well, so please don't hesitate to reach out. Couple of quick announcements. Super Bowl Sunday is coming up, and if you're planning to attend Super Bowl parties, please be careful about drinking and driving. We're running our usual special. If you find that you're impaired, you're without a ride, or shouldn't be driving at Hills Park, please contact us directly. You can always text Chief Miller at seven oh eight four four eight two one nine one, and we'll make sure that you will get home. You will not go to another party, you will not go to a drinking establishment, you will be taken home, no questions asked. Also, given the inclement weather over the past couple of weeks, it's not a bad idea to have an emergency kit in your car. If you visit the Hills Park Police Department Facebook page, there's a fair number posted about what you think you ought to have, but some of them might include a blanket, some jumper cables, some water, and something to jump the battery with. If you do become stranded on the road, please remain inside your vehicle until help arrives. Unfortunately, we see an untoward event when people, particularly in inclement weather, are out walking around, and it's something nasty out there. So again, please feel free to reach out, we'll be able to help you with whatever questions you might have about that. We're also gearing up for the twenty twenty four Special Olympics Illinois Polar Club. This is an event that we participate in every year. It's a fundraising event for the Special Olympics that runs from the beginning of February to March the second, and concludes with a variety of police departments jumping in cold water. There may be a special participant again this year, so we'll see. But again, we've done well by the village in terms of being able to raise a significant amount of money. We do this, we do on the top of Dunkin' Donuts, but these are all programs that are there to benefit the community, and particularly the Special Olympics, so stay tuned for that. I also have a very serious bulletin. As regards some real-time intelligence on a nationwide wave of eager energetic dealers of highly addictive substances who will soon be circulating in our area. These substances go by names like thinness, caramel delights, peanut butter patties, and the dreaded lemonade. They're distributed by smart, strong, fearless young women who will lure you with their good cause story, and they'll get you hooked. Many people start with one box, but one turns into two, two turns into five, and the next thing you know, you're hiding your stash in the freezer. We want security to know that the Hills Park Police Department is here for you. We set up a drop-off location for these, we'll call them Girl Scout cookies, at the Hills Park Police Department, where our officers will willingly dispose them safely. So just a heads up. And I wanted to take a couple of minutes, there's been a fair amount of chatter, both on social media and emails, et cetera, et cetera, regarding the asylum seekers, should they turn up in Hills Park, should we have an ordinance in place? We've taken a completely different view of asylum seekers arriving in the park. We view it as a crime. So if a bus were to show up in Hills Park and start offloading passengers, the bus driver would be arrested for human endangerments as well as human trafficking. The bus would be impounded and would be taken with its occupants to the appropriate processing station in Chicago, and they will be handed over along with the bus to the proper authorities in Chicago. Our concern is for the people of the bus. So turning a bus away doesn't do anything to protect the people. I mean, you've read stories about people turned loose, having no idea where they are, and walking along the road thinking that they're in Chicago and they're in Peetleth or Rockford or someplace that ain't Chicago. So again, the Hills Park Police Department has had a plan in place since about October of last year, and all of the pieces are ready and very willing to be alerted and put into place should the opportunity arrive. If you have any questions, my email is D Hope at HillsPark.org. I'm happy to answer any questions. Send me an email, drop me a phone number, whatever you need, and we'll talk to you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hope. It's good to see that Hills Park is a holy, peaceful, and inclusive, instead of being excuse. That's what we preach, and if we're preaching, we gotta practice it. Next, Accounts and Finances Report. We'll go over the Financial Division to see if we have anything out for me to give. We have another form we're hoping to see. Next thing is the Mayas Report. And since that began to remain, obviously, we don't have a Mayas report either. Outstanding, Corts Report. Mr. from government.
No, excuse me, no report here.
Thank you, Madam Corts. Okay. Managers Report. Does our esteemed manager have some words of wisdom for us to see?
I do have a request for the council to consider the third amended and restated Regional Water System Water Sale Purchase and Service Agreement between the village of Oak Lawn, Illinois, and the service between municipal customers. This is the third restated, which means that this is the fourth time this body has entertained this agreement. The major differences are noted in the cover sheet, but this time is mainly because there are three new communities added to the overall water agreement. Those three communities are now known as the Southeast Communities, who are not part of the original contract, those being Madison, French, and Littlewood Fields. Each had separate contracts that expired at different times. So there was some negotiations that took place last year, and now those customer communities are really part of this agreement. Couple of the key highlights of this agreement are the South. These customers will prepare to pay their share of interest in principle up to December thirty first of twenty twenty three, and all previous debt incurred and collectively paid by current water agreement members. So there's a catch-up share in all payments. Southeast customers will also pay their share of debts going forward, starting in January this year. These paying the catch-up payments by the Southeast customers will result in approximately six point four million dollars being reimbursed to current members of the water agreement. six point four million dollars being reimbursed to current members of the water agreement. There's other provisions in there. The Southeast community customers will now account for almost fourteen and a half percent, or about forty million of the total capital fund we needed, which would have otherwise been covered by Oak Lawn, the North, and Southwest communities. So most of the agreement is similar to what you adopted before at the time. Since twenty fourteen, there was amendment in twenty twenty, one last year, and now this year, this should be, I hope, final. But this is to take those communities into the contract and help even out our costs. So I would seek a approval of the council to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four.
So move.
Oh, yeah. Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four in accordance of the Pales Park Cook County, Illinois, approving third amended and restated regional water system, water sale, purchase, and service agreement by and among the village of Oak Lawn, Cook County, Illinois, and other municipalities in authorizing the execution and delivery of said amended decree.
Second.
Here your motion and a second. If you have further comments, the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Proton.
Yes. Moving on to announcements. There are announcements for the mayor. Next meeting of the Pales Park Lead Keepers Initiative is scheduled for Saturday, February third, from two PM to three-thirty PM at the Pales Park Library. All skilled others are welcome to come and see what all of the buzz is about. Better. You're welcome. Thank you. The eleventh Annual Pales One Eighteen Tribute Night will take place on Saturday, February third, at Elements by the Odyssey, located at one six two three five South of Range Road in Ormond Park. The fee is fifty dollars per person, and short cities will support classroom technology. You can register and find sponsorship opportunities at palesoneeighteen.reptrak.net or the village website. Thank you to everyone donated to the village's hotel holiday charity drive. We collected a large number of items for our Dorrick Veterans and Mantino Veterans Home and NOS, a local no-kill humane society with adoption services and veterinary care. Finally, our official village flower will be announced, sewn, sewn, stapled. I'm sorry, I didn't see that with enthusiasm, but I'm aware of what he does, but I did just not envy to do with that idea with us. Citizen visitors, common period, do you have anything, massive citizens? Please, please stand in a single file. Okay, hearing that and saying no one, I move for a motion to adjourn, the regular group.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, that is safe, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Proton.
Yes. You may adjourn, thank you very much, everyone should say something else.